Can you address? I'm not starting quite yet.
Thank you.
You affirm that you are, that it is impractical for you to be with us this evening, that you are at home or somewhere and alone. Jessica?
It is impractical for me to be with you this evening. I am home and I am alone.
Thank you. Kristin?
It is impractical for me to be there this evening. I am home and alone.
Thank you. So we will need to do any votes of the board tonight by roll call. And other than that, it's business as usual. So we do have a public input time of one of two. And I don't see any members of the public here with us this evening. You are always welcome. So we will have a second public input time a little bit later on. Let's just go cracking right into our student and teacher presentation. We have the fourth grade teaching team presenting about the importance of student mindset and not the ELA. Very excited to have you.
Yeah, so I want to thank Kiara Bell and Stephanie McGregor for presenting tonight. Kiara's been here for a few years. Stephanie is new this year and both together as a team off to great start, fourth grade. Doing, doing really well first couple of months here, the first quarter, I believe. But I want to thank Steph and Kiara for putting this presentation together. The theme, the message tonight is you're going to hear about growth mindset, student mindset. And there's been a lot of brain research done over a number of years. And, you know, more recently, I'd say the past decade or two, more about not only the brain research, but how it impacts student learning and how it impacts really the approach, even the language, the academic language that we use with students. So I don't want to steal the thunder, but this is an exciting topic for me. I've done some work with this and I'm excited to hear the presentation. Thank you both for your work and turn it over to the fourth grade.
Hello, as Tom said, I am Kiara Bell.
I'm Stephanie McGregor.
Can you two match tonight? Well, the funny part too, when Stephanie came, she was here over the summer and I forgot what it was, but someone said, oh, is that Ms. Bell? No, she'll be working with those.
So we hear that from time to time and today it did not help. But so we decided to talk about this because we start the year with this and we feel that mindset greatly impacts success. So we thought it was a good topic to present.
To look deeper into mindset, looking at fixed mindset versus a growth mindset. Psychology professor at Stanford University, Carol Wett, dear in education, may have heard of her. She developed these concepts of a fixed mindset and a growth mindset. So a growth mindset is the belief that you can grow your brain and that intelligence grows with effort. So if you keep trying and trying and trying, you should be able to accomplish your goals. Whereas if you have a fixed mindset, you have the belief that you were born a certain way and cannot change. So that, you know, is really kind of, I know in math, I teach math, a lot of people say, I can't do math. I've never been able to do that. But the idea of a growth mindset is if you work hard and keep trying, you should be able to do math. And it gets pretty clear that in students, that's pretty important to have a growth mindset. Otherwise, they won't have as much success in their brain. So it was introduced to students at the beginning of the year using Mojo from Class Do- Class Dojo. And then using their growth mindset videos, students helped Mojo believe that he could be smart. He could learn from his mistakes, learn from his friends and change his mindset. And then after helping Mojo, you know, it's usually easier to help somebody else before you help yourself. They then reflected on their own mindsets and discussed how they themselves can become smarter, that they could learn from their mistakes and how they can learn from others. And you can see there are some of their responses down here if you want to take a look later as to how they could help themselves. So after learning about growth mindset, students put that in action. They were given a set challenge to do. We have some pictures here. So students were challenged to build the tallest tower they could out of index cards and stickers. As you can see, there are a lot of different types of towers, different heights. And each group had to really try multiple trials to be able to make the tall towers. You can see this group in particular has multiple, you know, different variations of types of towers. And they kept working until they could find the tallest tower possible. We definitely learned how to use a growth mindset in this challenge. So then we wanted to make sure that it wasn't just one of those fun beginning of the year activities that we did one time, did a couple of days and then never thought about again. So then we wanted to think about how we could use it in the curriculum and how we could remind students of it throughout the year. So in both math and ELA, we discussed the strategies used to solve problems. So then we thought about kids could have these and apply this to math problems or they could apply it to their writer's block. I know I see that a lot when we're drafting. They all of a sudden get stuck and they're done. So we could think about how we could apply it there. We discussed feelings with problems that are simpler, feelings with problems that are difficult and how to handle those feelings because it's an easy problem. It feels different than if it's a difficult problem. And then that led us to our big question of what do we do when fixed mindset thoughts creep into their minds? And if you do read it later, they have responses down there. So I would check that out. And now we are continuing to bring growth mindset into the curriculum by consistently reminding ourselves and others to have a growth mindset. It's kind of fun to see students feel frustrated. It's not fun to be frustrated, but it's fun to see them be frustrated, realize that's okay. And have their peers help them get through that frustration. It's also been fun now that we have been doing conferences that parents have shared that their children have brought home growth mindset ideas and are actually reminding their family members to have this mindset. So they're not just using it here at school. They are really applying it to their lives outside of school. And really that's what we're trying to do here is to make sure that they are learning inside and outside of school.
Thank you so much. Any board members have questions or comments for?
Is fourth grade the target age? Great to start this.
I think you could really start it at any age. I mean, you wouldn't go necessarily as in-depth or if they're older, you might go even further in-depth. But just having those ideas that we're going to keep trying and it's okay to do something wrong or to make a mistake, I think it's starting to occur even before they come to school.
So is this something that we'll get kind of dropped down as we progress or are these the only two qualified?
Yeah, so. It really, I mean, first growth mindset, it really is a sort of lens. It's a lens into your learning. So it's a, it's a mindset of I'm going to keep trying. I'm going to make mistakes. I'm going to build off these mistakes. And it's that continuum of growth over time. There's, there's some videos out there on the power of yet, you know, not yet that I'm, you know, I'm building toward. And so it really is a culture thing and excuse me, it's something that, you know, I'm really invested in as well and, and just building that culture in the school around growth. And, you know, tonight we're going to talk about NEWA and we're going to talk about growth. And so I think it's important that that whole growth mindset is, it pervades our data, pervades the way we, we speak to students, the way they speak to themselves. It's that inner voice kind of thing of not giving up and so, yes, it is something that I think is applicable to all ages. It's sort of a culture that we want to drive as a school. And I will say, not just in fourth grade, when I walk through classrooms, I do hear a lot of those kinds of that kind of verbiage, you know, with, with students toward growth and, and not fixed. You know, I, I remember when I was in school, in elementary school and, and might've been early middle school, you know, IQ number, that, that was a, that was a big deal. And, you know, it sort of defined you and it sort of defined you as a learner. And, and I can still remember conversations about that as a, as a kid. And that affected me. I mean, it sort of affected about how I saw myself and how I saw myself as a learner. And this idea that, like they said, that, you know, your learning is not fixed, your intelligence is not fixed. I think is a really powerful, it's a powerful message that, that kids need to hear from an early age. And so I, I think it's an emphasis. I see it across the district, but I also, I see it across grade levels and sort of work through classrooms. So I think it was, this is a nice summary of what it looks like in grade four, but I think it really is language that should pervade all, all, all the grades. Yeah.
What was your IQ?
I'll talk to you later. I'm very happy to say growth mindset was a part of my journey. If it was fixed, I might, anyway.
So how are you incorporating this concept into like your everyday daily instruction when you're not doing a specific project?
Um, I think just generally, especially, I mean, I can speak to math. We have a growth mindset every day. Every student in math, whether they think that they're a great strong math student or they struggle with math, is going to find struggle in math. You know, I think everyone in the school works to challenge their maybe weaker, I've been saying weaker, but students may struggle more and the students who may excel more naturally in school. And every student has to have a growth mindset. So we, when a student kind of comes to a roadblock and they're frustrated or they're challenging, we keep trying. We don't just give up and say, you're not going to get this. We'll just, you know, move on to something else. We might move on for the day or at that moment, but we're not going to just stop. So I think it's just continually having those conversations with kids and also, you know, they're constantly learning from their mistakes. They're thinking about, you know, having the power of yet. They, a lot of kids this year now have said, oh, I won't be able to do this yet. Just having that mindset and knowing that they will get it keeps them going. So I'd say that's. Yeah, very similarly, I know a lot of, with, especially with our writing, like if we're modeling after another author's like lead in their story, we look at the examples, we do it, it sounds great. And then when it's time to write our own, it's all said, I can't do this now. And then so it's not, you can't do this, you can't do this yet. Let's look at another one. And it's just kind of using that same verbiage and just making it known that we can learn from our mistakes. We don't have to do things immediately. We can take our time to learn and just, it doesn't need to be an immediate process always. And it's just making sure they know that you will get it eventually. It doesn't have to be this immediate product. It's just making sure they're comfortable with the learning process.
Nice. I'm assuming this goes really well with social motion side of things as well and incorporating our guidance counselor and some of those conversations of a more broader scale.
Yeah, she's very familiar with the, with the building that culture and having these conversations for, for growth. Yeah.
Do you want to comment?
Absolutely. You weren't here for our public time, so.
And I apologize for being late. First of all, one of the most rude things you can do is walk in on somebody's presentation. So I apologize. I have a, I have a kindergartner here. So I just, you know, I want to say that I applaud you because I'm rolling this out to my executive team. And, and I got to tell you how transformational it can be for people in business. And I often think how my life would be different or how I could think differently if I ever had started with this. And, and so it's really, it's really great because I think what it does is for our kids, it's teaching them how to think and not what to think. And I think that's a, that's an incredible thing. So great job. I, I might even ask you to share the PowerPoint with me because I truly am. I just printed up the materials. Are you using Carol Wett as the, as the foundational author for this? Okay. So, yeah. Okay. So yeah, and I'm about to buy the books and share it with all the executive team. So, uh, I, it's amazing that it's, that's here in the school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Um, Kristin or Jess, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, I was just excited to hear about it because there's a significant amount of data that shows that having that growth mindset really leads to much better long lifetime learning outcomes. So it's really great to see it integrated so early.
Thank you so much for presenting really interesting information and so glad to see it in the classroom and appreciate your time.
Sure. Can I indulge you or request to do the middle school transition report next? So Mr. Chamberlain?
That would be absolutely fine.
Sure. And thank you. And just very quickly, I really appreciate and commend the board for taking a look at transition during the negotiation agreement. I think that's wonderful. Um, got a chance to just take a look at current practice and then it will develop, I think, as I showed the memo. But currently we are meeting with, with the Mount Vernon students. And I put some themes there in, in the memo, a little bit of work and a little bit scheduling because it's a little bit different world. And put together a draft of, I think, of the future, of what their transition will look like, starting in January, all the way through next November. And, uh, I think it builds upon current practices at the, at the middle school. I, I spent some time with Bethany and Maggie and next year it'll be Dan Freena who takes over for, because they loop. But all are excited. And one of the things that I just noticed, one of the things that Beth and I agreed on early is, is lunch observations. Really, for the, for middle school youngsters, lunch is such a significant portion of their day. And we really want to take a look at, see how the Mount Vernon youngsters are integrating at lunch and all those social opportunities. And that'll be part of the report next year. But, um, this, this, Tom and Bethany will meet in January to, to begin this and, and all the activities throughout the year. And it'll be very much ingrained in the system of transition. And we'll be ready to have Dan meet with, and talk to Dan of all the youngsters in September with the social motion connection. And we'll have a full report November, just as designed. And this year we're doing okay, but next year it'll be a little bit more deliberate, more purposeful. And we'll wrap the entire system of transition, make sure we report that a year from now.
Great. Thank you so much.
Happy to do it. Um, I, transition is very, very important work and it's nice to work on, on this piece. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate the collaboration. Um, comments or questions for Mr. Chamberlain?
I do, and no surprise. Um, a couple of things in terms of the, the draft plan. Can we incorporate inside this draft plan, the integration of our sixth grade teachers? A part of the contract requires a couple of class joint exercises between both buildings.
Thank you.
Whether you do it by Zoom or something like that.
You got it.
See that in there. And then as well as the professional development opportunities, including our current sixth graders into, I don't know how Christine would, would structure that, but getting them into an AMS professional development opportunity so they can kind of make sure that there's more, um, more cohesiveness with, with, with regards to what we're setting our, our kids up for success for.
Absolutely. We are connected to the six eight math pilot. Christina's helped me there to make sure in, in Mount Vernon. But yes, we'll make those changes. That's why it's draft. Thank you for the feedback. We'll codify those two things. We'll look at the entire agreement and we'll make sure that we plan those deliberately and purposely well as possible.
And then, um, on November tenth, uh, there's just a spelling error in there.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
As soon as you see, you know, those.
Thank you, Mr. Eiffel.
I'll just kind of comment on my transition to middle school way, way back and it was, uh, interesting.
It usually is.
It was on the school bus that I transitioned. But I just look back and think back and it's like, oh my word. You didn't have all this stuff, but get on the bus and go. That's all.
Thank you.
One more thing. What are we going to do to capture the remaining students that haven't had the opportunity to be?
The, me and, currently, they are on, I met with Maggie up there picking them up as we speak. Every student will have an unusual lead with Maggie. As soon as we're trying to preserve, as I said, the memo, core instructional time, we're doing the best we can. We got, thank you. I met with her just recently to reinforce.
Thank you. Kristin or Jess, did you have anything for Mr. Chamberlain?
Um, I just wanted to say as both a parent and a board member that I'm so pleased to see that more thought and structures going into the transition because it is a real struggle for our kids. It's a big jump from MBVS to AMS and that's, it's, it's not necessarily a bad thing because I think that there's a lot of great things for them to look forward to with AMS, but it's scary and it's hard. And it's going from a really small space to a really big one. So I really appreciate it.
Very welcome and you are a hundred percent correct.
Thank you, Jess. Kristin, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Chamberlain, for coming and presenting. We appreciate it. And, uh, the plan is certainly a great framework to start from. We look forward to, uh, how it plays out next year.
My pleasure. I appreciate the feedback very much. It'll continue to grow and next year we'll, we'll iterate it again, but thank you all.
Thank you so much for joining us.
My pleasure.
Don't speed in your boss.
Thanks for the tidbits.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda approval. Before I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, did anyone have items that they'd like to pull out for discussion? Jess or Kristin?
No. Nope.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items, one through five.
So I, I do have a couple of comments about the NEWA stuff. So do we want to pull that out or accept it? I don't have any issues with the thing that you want that sort of touch upon the call. Thanks.
I'm happy to discuss it in advance of the motion.
Let's do that. Okay. I'm sorry for you. So, um, first of all, I, I have to highlight. And you know, the superintendent sent this a couple of weeks ago with regards to our SASS scores. Holy cow.
Yeah.
And when you take a look at an evaluation of elementary schools across the state, and while Vernon did not fare that great, although I would argue that it did well, that great, these scores below even the best schools in the state away.
Yeah.
And to show that we are literally in the top one percent of elementary schools, that is a huge, huge feather in the hat. Every single employee inside this building, the teamwork that they do, the way they approach their business, the way they approach their instructional capabilities. So please bring that back to, to your colleagues, Kim. Because when I saw that, like, I was like, holy cow, this is a story that we need to get out there. We need to share with the members of this community that we literally are doing awesome things here. And if we can share that, I will fund an appreciation event for the staff inside this building. Because when I saw that, I was like, we got to do something as a board because there's a lot of hard work last year. Probably one of the worst years ever from an educational standpoint, and we rocked it in a major, major way. So kudos, kudos, kudos. Now, NEWA doesn't necessarily track the same results, but that's a summer away. And this is the beginning point where we take these results and we want to see how much growth occurs. So whatever we did last year, we literally needed to take a Xerox machine and do it again, replicate it again. And hopefully, like, the, the community sees this at town meeting, they will be so pleased and happy. Maybe we can do a press release, maybe we can do a, an announcement, but I was really, really happy with this all that.
So, thank you. So I asked Christine to speak to those actually during the, during the principal's report. But it, it bears repeating and being called out. And so, uh, this school in particular fared exceptionally well, uh, over the last two years really. And, um, I do want to give some credit to the school board for calling attention to math and making it a big priority at the board level two years ago. That did have an impact, but I'd like Christine, uh, to, to speak to those specific things that were most proud of.
So, yeah. So, uh, we know the union leader ran an article about test scores looking at the twenty eighteen nineteen school year, pre-COVID and then the twenty 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 one school year. And for many schools, they lost about, uh, you know, ten percent of their students went from being proficient to not being proficient. Or, you know, between those two test events. Um, and again, you know, uh, some of those cohorts changed and so on. So it's really just in a, an approximation, um, of how those schools fared. But Mount Vernon, um, the opposite happened where, you know, uh, most schools had less students proficient. Mount Vernon had more students proficient and was.
To an enormous degree.
Yeah, significant. Yeah. So in English Language Arts, um, we went in the twenty nineteen school year, seventy one percent of our students were proficient, which is a high proficiency level already for reading, seventy one percent. We went to eighty one percent of our students this past spring reached proficiency. So, um, they, they met or exceeded that grade level expectation for that grade level, which is unbelievably high. In math, we went from the twenty nineteen school year, um, fifty two percent of our students being proficient to seventy one percent of our students being proficient. So almost twenty percent of our students were proficient, um, last spring compared to pre-COVID, uh, which is astounding. And a lot of that work, it was definitely a focus on math. It was a lot of the work that Sharni did to build a math culture here in the school, to make math exciting and interesting. Really schoolwide, having heard the competition in the houses that they did and the different challenges that they did. So many students would come to Sharni and say, it's a, Mrs. Brown, math is now my favorite subject, which we didn't have before. So really just changing the culture around math was huge, but all of our teachers changed their practices as well around math. And this was really a culmination of the work that we've been doing for a number of years around math. And the work that Sharni's done and all of the teachers have done, they've done deep professional development in math. Many of our teachers went to OGAAC training and that training really teaches, um, teachers how to see the developmental progression in mathematics, to understand, um, how students will learn to add, how students learn to multiply and what they, what conceptual understanding you need to build to do that successfully. And changing practice, which is hard because often as teachers, you just think, I'm going to teach the way I was taught. There's so many things we've changed about the way that we teach mathematics. We hold back. And I'm probably talking too much, but I'm excited. So we intentionally hold back, um, teaching that procedure. If, if we're doing long division, just teaching those rules, that's not enough. Let's first understand the concept behind division, understand what division is, um, understand what we're doing first, whether it's through manipulatives or through, um, alternate ways to understand long division, then at the end, get to that algorithm. If that's the most efficient way, let's go ahead and, and do that way and teach that. But we want to make sure we're teaching the, the deep understanding first. So if students only learn the algorithm and they forget the rule and the process, they're stuck. But if they actually understand what division is, if they forget the rule or the process, they're able to uncover it, figure it out themselves. So we've been working really hard to actually sometimes go deeper, um, to be able to, uh, you know, get eventually to that algorithm later on, which sometimes feels a little uncomfortable for students and for teachers. So significant change had to happen in, in how we were teaching math. The other thing that we did, uh, which this was surprising to, to all of us, last year, we rolled out the modular assessments, which are, it's part of New Hampshire SAS. They're essentially like practice tests, um, but they're mini tests and they're meant actually to be used, um, curriculum embedded. So when you finish your geometry unit, you take the New Hampshire SAS modular, which is only five to eight questions. But what we realized was that when kids were on the computer, they, they maybe had an issue with technology, but they said, oh, I can't ask any questions. And no, you can't ask how to solve that question, but you can ask how to drag or drop that. Or, um, you know, what, what to do with that test item if you're not sure. And we realized that through those practice tests that kids were, they wouldn't ask any questions because they were told we can't answer a question for you, which we meant about content. So as teachers, we have to change our language a little bit and do that practice with students. So that was huge. And also the vocabulary that's used on New Hampshire SAS is not always the vocabulary we use. So having them take that practice test and then going over the questions and saying, oh, you see this word equation? Or this word, you know, we, this is how we call that, you know, or, or this is called a tape diagram. We call it a bar model. It's the same thing. So going through those practice tests gave students the opportunity to learn the technology, but also to learn the format and the vocabulary, which I think made a difference, um, with our test results. It gave our, our students a leg up. So we are continuing with using those modular assessments. And in fact, on our, um, PDA, PD day, school-based PD day coming up, um, next week, we'll be spending time in those modular assessments, making sure we have a good plan to map out while we're using them and making sure we're comfortable and ready to use them for next year. So unbelievable work. Our teachers knew in the beginning of last year that our kids had that disruptive learning from March through June and knew, um, they all, they, they were all, um, you know, they worked so hard last year just to make sure that they were catching students up and making at least that year's worth of growth, if not more, to have that catch-up growth. The amazing thing about the math results is that, um, nationwide, uh, the greater impact on students was actually with math and not with reading. And the reason why is because when kids were home, the parents were encouraging them to read and getting books and, um, so on. But weren't always doing that with our students at home during that disruptive learning. So, um, uh, you know, and also with, with math, if there's a little hole or gap, it's hard to build upon that. It's like House of Cards, it falls. So when you have a chunk that maybe didn't get learned, when you try to go ahead, it's much harder. You can't just fill a gap and then jump ahead. You have to fill and then you're forward. So math was a lot harder to fix after any holes or gaps with disruptive learning. And our teachers were able to fill that gap and more, um, so really significant. And if you look at NEWA, all of our, um, grade levels, um, net were exceeded, um, that typical target growth in math. So really, so we did see similar results on NWA that, um, students were meeting were exceeding in math. There were a few grade levels in English Language Arts that, um, we didn't and we're zeroing in on that. Tom and I have already started, um, talking around our goals, which, um, I can share with the board leader tonight. And really looking school by doing something similar with math, with reading and really, uh, building that literacy culture here as well.
Still that, that problem spot of third grade on the NEWA results. But, um, I really like, I can't stress enough like how proud I am of the people here. The way they went above and beyond last year and still actually showed probably one of the best results in the state of New Hampshire in terms of improvement. Like, holy cow.
And just some context, if you're a numbers person. So the statewide average was that kids dropped sixteen points to proficiency. Here we went up nineteen points in math. We're more than twice as high than the state average with proficiency. More than five times higher than Manchester and higher than Bedford and every other town listed in the report. It's just, it, it, they are unbelievably strong and powerful members. So the staff, this faculty, uh, everyone in this building deserves an incredible amount of credit, a hundred percent. Even we can have pizza day. Yeah, I mean, and then, you know, obviously I wasn't part of last year, but I can, I can just tell you the work. I mean, they've come in this year hitting the ground running, um, just digging in, rolling up their sleeves. And it's not easy, you know, this year is, we're still in this weird, weird place. So, um, I just want to thank our staff and recognize their, their incredible work last year. And, um, just their, I mean, you heard mindset, it really is approaching student learning every day, just the way they care about our kids and, um, and really are dedicated to their learning. Um, it's, it's impressive and I'm proud to be part of it. So, thanks for the, the comments.
I have another chair.
Thank you. Was there any other discussion on NEWA or any of the other consent agenda items? During that, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda items, one through five?
I make the motion to accept consent agenda items, one through five.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll say it.
Thank you. We need a, uh, any discussion? During that, we need a roll call vote.
Okay, yes. Echo, yes.
Lawrence, yes?
Pinkley, yes.
Clark, yes.
Thank you. And we're up to the principal's report.
Thank you very much. Um, so happy November. Here we are. Just wanted to make note of, um, we have some snacks. I don't know if you saw them in the back over there. The girls on the run team today came in this afternoon, the coaches set those up for the board and, uh, any folks who are interested. So please help yourself. I know that they, uh, they would love to see you munching on a few treats.
They need adorable posters.
Give me some posters with some messages over there.
Service. And this was, thank you for all of your hard work. So really cute.
It's, we're a lot of kids in here. We have, uh, boy, on that team over twenty, twenty-five, somewhere in there. Yeah. Yeah, it was a, it was a good crowd. So, so thank you to them and help yourself. All right. So, uh, again, I'm going to do this, this being the third, the third report I've done. Just again, our focus, uh, community, engaging, challenging, supporting each learner and SEO. Those are our three main focuses. Uh, I'm going to sort of weave my report around that and those themes. I'm going to start with community. This was a huge month for community at the village school. Just a lot of really, really cool. Just a lot of really, really cool activities for students, for staff, a lot of coming together and a lot of, a lot of good community, positive community. Last week, we had Operation Pumpkin. So Hegan High School students, as has been tradition, came up and did a, an amazing performance. My first rodeo with that, amazing performance, musical, dancing. But really, really neat was they they sort of, they captured our, one of our themes here, and they talked about kindness, and that was, that was the theme of the message. And and it was really neat for me to see students that are, that are down at Sahegan, who graduated from from our school here, and just how excited they were to be here, how excited they were to give back. I don't know what was more of a thrill, though, watching the students perform or watching our students' faces as they were performing, jaws drop, just like in awe. These are heroes to them. So the vibe was just really positive. Want to recognize Mr. Brooks. I know he he coordinates that with the ethics forum down there. And then they they give pumpkins to every student, which was fun. And then we had our costume parade in the afternoon, which was a nice sense of normalcy, if you will. It was outside. It was a nice day. We had a good crowd, parents, and and so students were very excited to show off their costumes. And it was a good day, good day all around. So thanks to all who were involved in that. It was a great community event across the board. The other event that we had in October was the movie night, and I want to recognize the PTO for their work on that. Record, record crowd. It was an outdoor movie. We had the hill over by the basketball court completely filled up with with people. That was a beautiful night, too, seventy degrees, beautiful. And so thanks to the PTO, popcorn, a whole bunch of fun things that night. So it was a, it was a great night for for our village community. I had my first coffee with Tom two weeks ago, and that went really well. It was a small crowd, but it was, it was, it was very positive. And I was able to give sort of a review of the past month, the coming up month, some of the things we're talking about here. And we're going to do that again at the end of this month, so it'll be a monthly thing. It's virtual, so bring your virtual coffee. And it's, it's, it's just another way to build communication and 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 give both. It is a two-way street. I opened the floor up if anyone had any questions or comments, and there's some really, really positive comments in that meeting. So again, that'll be, that'll be coming up again soon. Sore, just an update. So we are soaring, I think, and we are continuing to hit that theme. I've mentioned some of the fun plans we have. Our mascot now has a name. It's Monty, Monty the Falcon. Monty will make a physical presence here in the next couple of weeks. And I think I mentioned last month, we are, I talked to Ms. Peril down the hill. We are getting ready for a, a challenge with with Clark Wilkins, to be determined. Very excited for that. Could be a dance-off, but since you said it, then you now have to be involved in that. But now, we're, we're, we're having fun with it. I, in all seriousness, the walking through the classrooms and just hearing that sore vibe, it's not perfect. I mean, we're not, we're not hitting home runs every day, but just hearing that vibe and just that that consistency and that seem, that consistent message across the school is is really powerful. And we will continue to have these sore assemblies, just different things we're going to do, not just reminders about behavior, but things we're going to do to to build a positive culture here and continue to build a positive culture here. I want to thank the New Boston Grange. They donated dictionaries to our third grade. That actually happened today, and so they were not able to come in, but we were able to give them to our third graders. They're very excited and reading dictionaries, and it doesn't get much better than that. They were, they were very, very much interested in that. And so thank you to the New Boston Grange for that donation. It's been happening for about twenty years. Okay, so moving into the Engage Challenge and Support. So we are very deep right now into our RTI work, and we're actually going to change the name of our RTI team to the MTS S Team, Multi-Tiered Systems and Supports, for a couple of reasons. But really, when we talk about RTI, what has been RTI, named RTI for many years, we're really talking about all hands on deck, is we're rolling up our sleeves, whether it's tier one, the classroom, tier two, the interventionist, or tier three, usually special education, but it can be more than special education. It's more more developed plan for a student. It's all hands on deck, and it's everyone rolling up their sleeves. And so our team has had three meetings. We're meeting again as part of the work next week. And I'm really happy to announce we have a forum and a process defined that we're going to present to staff next week. We have analyzed data, and we're continuing to do that. Ms. Brown and and Ms. Home, the specialists, looking and making sure that we're providing interventions to the right students and and having a system to where we are providing interventions and then making sure that we're seeing growth. And if we're not, then re-revamping what we're doing. So we, I feel like our process is really well-defined right now, and we're getting into a good place with that. We also are talking about the individual student plan, and we have some templates that we're working on. We're really just getting into that work right now. But it's exciting because we're not just talking about one particular group of students. We're talking about all students and how we're going to address all students' needs through these plans. So having good, good conversations in our meetings and working toward some draft templates that we're going to, we're going to actually be piloting with students this year. Also on that front, we talked about NEWA tonight. We talked about data. We now, near the end of the first term, one of the meetings that I've been having with grade-level teams is just around our scope and sequence, which is sort of like, where are we with our instruction at this point in the year? How are we feeling about our pace? How are we feeling about our students in terms of what they're retaining and what their, the growth that they're, that we're seeing? So I want to thank the teachers for their work with that. We've had some, some good meetings and good discussions about where we are in the year. Hard to believe we're, we're at the end of first quarter here. But but those conversations are continuing in our grade-level meetings. And I will finish with SEL, and we talked about growth mindset. I do want to recognize our counselor, and I know at the very beginning of the year, we talked about the Second Step Program. She actually asked me, she said, boy, these kids are so engaged. We're doing so much. Can I have more time? And regretfully, we're instructional minutes. We're going to have to keep it at thirty. That's the design. But she's feeling like she's making a lot of headway with kids and having really good conversations. The other thing that I might have mentioned last month that's been exciting to see is the work that the teachers are doing to piggyback off of that message. So it's not just counselor comes in once a week, talks about it, and then we go back to our business. It really is a vibe in the room. So that's really good to see, and I'm happy to see Anna working so closely with with teachers. She's also coming to grade-level meetings now, so she's actually going to be part of these conversations that I mentioned that we're having about where we are with curriculum, where we are with individual students, and that's, that's been a positive thing. I also want to thank Ms. Steppen. Ms. Steppen's here tonight. She has not been busy at all. The nurse's office has been very quiet for the past month. But in all seriousness, I do want to thank Ms. Steppen. These are very challenging times, as we all know. Included in the report tonight are the numbers for the nurse's office, and and we will, we'll include those each month. I want you and we, we want you to see what's happening here. We've got some positive cases. Those actually have not turned into pervasive. We had, we did have a few at one particular grade level, you know, more than one or two, but they resolved themselves over that time quarantine. And I think Ms. Deppen uses really good judgment. You know, when students come to the nurse's office, these are, these are tough times. You know, when you, when you hear a complaint of a symptom, she has to follow protocol and guidelines. And sometimes those are tough conversations to have because we want our students in the classroom learning. We don't want them losing instructional time in the classroom. But unfortunately, sometimes with these situations, decisions have to be made. And I want to thank Ms. Steppen for being resolved about making those tough decisions for kids, for their safety and their learning. So. Let's see. I could only have ten minutes, so I don't, I don't want to go too long. But that's just a synopsis of the month. And looking ahead, I do want to just say the PTA is planning the Avenue of Lights coming up in December. And we also have the Thirty Days of Giving, Giving happening this month. So a lot of, lot of fun things being planned, and it's been, it's been a good month. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
If there's one sent me, if people have questions, then I haven't covered the information. I'll go.
I was just going to ask if that eight, what is it, eight twenty-two? Yeah, eight twenty-two, is that on par? Is that higher than normal, visitations?
Extremely high.
Is it?
Just because of the times COVID and spend them even if mild. Take our direction from the Department of Health and Human Services. He listens maybe twice a month, but he's three weekly with Dr. Chan, the state epidemiologist we just had on yesterday. Even has a letter that he has his refer that we can give to physicians or parents to give to their physicians and ask to, yes, you are supposed to test them even if mild, for the return back into school. So it's, it's everything. A healthy stomach ache, sore throat cough, you name it, headache.
Do you have what you need to handle that?
I do. I think I need time sometimes, but besides that, yeah.
Supply, whatever else you might.
Yeah, it's, it's been busy. It's been busy throughout the whole district for all the nurses for the last year and a half since this whole COVID started. I mean, most people have been wonderful. We get those sometimes, remember, it's difficult. I don't, I stick to the protocol.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I, you know, I love a good update. I love a good update. And of course, all the great things that are happening, but really, like, those numbers are shocking to me. Right? Jaw actually dropped. It was like, okay. And I crunched a couple of numbers. I'm like, how do you have time in the day to see all of those kids? How is it possible? Like, even if you were spending five or six minutes with each, with each one, it's just, that's a huge amount of time. So thank you, heartfelt, like, thanks. I think we all want to wrap you up in a big hug and say thank you so much for the effort because it's a huge one, clearly.
I think we're all just trying to keep everybody safe. We can't miss our class, but they should be.
Yeah, one of the things that's always, you know, sometimes you'll see a number like, oh, there's only been one positive. There's only been two positives. One, one positive case leads to a whole lot of phone calls, a whole lot of paperwork, a whole lot of trace, whatever, so.
And a lot of communication with the Department of Health and Human Services. Every case, we have to report to them within five hours, even though we're not doing the actual testing. We have to report to them, and now let's keep making sure clusters are cases within the school setting.
Two hundred and seventy-five COVID cases, SAU-wise, at the very beginning of this thing, but the nurses, SAU, have tracked two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight individual situations related to COVID, over and above everything else that they normally do this week.
You can't see my wow, but wow.
I'd also love to give Kim a huge amount of credit for her parent communication, too. It's a, you know, a scary and stressful time for parents, knowing the right thing to do and when can I send my kid back. And Kim has been really great about communicating. So she deserves a lot of credit for that, too.
So I wanted to strike off, like, hit the nail on the head, you know, in terms of resources. You know, twenty-two on average kids a day, like, is there a part of the day that's more busy? Like, I'm assuming somebody walks in, they've got cold symptoms, teacher reports that they go down. So the beginning part of your day, you're being really taxed, and then the end is light? Or is this really something spread out throughout the day?
It's trying to spread out throughout the day. A lot of times, the kids will come in, they'll come in talking, whatever. I mean, most parents have been very good about it, without a doubt. So, but it, it's throughout the day. It gets, you just never know. It's either the phone, it's the radio, it's them walking in, it's emails, it's, yeah, come on.
Are we seeing the same levels at our other elementary schools? So there's no, like, sharing of resources that could help Kim during the day? It's just really not possible, fortunately not. Do you think, like, having someone in, like, maybe a couple hours in the morning and leveraging some of our students' budget for that?
I think the only thing that I probably thought of recently that I had to say to Tom was that I got off the phone with the Department of Health and Human Services the other day, is if there was just one contact person that dealt directly with them, because we don't have time to be on the phone with them. And I feel that sometimes we're doing their job for them because they're asking us all the information, what test was it? When were the symptoms? How much were the symptoms? Instead of them making us phone calls, we're supplying off an information, getting the explanation for that. So they have that documentation. So I mean, that was just something that occurred to me the other day. Like I said, I hadn't had a chance to shop with Tom yet.
Do we have money that we could potentially leverage for to get substitute systems to help Kim? Or is that really not something that we think we could get?
Yeah, I've not looked at it, but I can certainly look at this, see how that would be helpful.
Because I know we've got an allocation specifically to the nurse line substitute budget piece to get in cover, the cover folks, which is a couple thousand. Okay.
Questions or comments for Tom and Ken?
No, I just, I would like an update on the staffs, and it's in there, I know.
Yeah, yeah. We've, I've seen every, every.
My consensus is that we, we're only two months in, and we need you to be here in March, April, and May. So we, we gotta, we gotta get our handle on your volume. If it doesn't go away, we gotta figure out how we can help you. That's my takeaway. So next, next month, I'd like.
So now that you have board support.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, let Tom know what's going on.
And we're going in a cold, a true suit, you know?
Enrollment update. If we can include our seventh and eighth grade students in there, just in terms of probably kids we're sending down with Dr. Bruce, who we could provide that. We used to put it in our report or get the admission score report where they're broken out. That would be greatly appreciated. And then the number of evaluations that we're doing, both formal and informal, from that base.
It is in here. I just wondered if we could put, like, the number out of, how many are remaining?
Oh, okay, sure, sure. Yeah.
And if I can piggyback on what Mr. O'Keefe asked for the enrollment update, if you could go even by month, so that we can see if there's a trend month to month, we're going up or down, I appreciate that. That's not too much to show me to table.
Yeah, that's easy.
And Tom, we do enrollment numbers at the SAU each month, and really can separate each conference and app for you for something.
And even, do we have an October first number for tuition agreement? We do, I don't have it.
I probably, I mean, I have our enrollment as of October. Not officially from D E L yet, but we have it in-house, yeah.
Jess or Kristen, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I did not have anything, no.
I'm all set, too.
Thank you. Tom, was there a theater arts club proposal?
Yes, so last month, we talked about drama club. And it was brought to my attention after that meeting that there are actually two components to drama club. There is the drama aspect, the theater aspect of drama club. And then there's also the set design aspect of that. And our art teacher is part of that set design, and Ms. Anderson is the drama side of it. So last month, we approved the drama side of it, and I'm coming tonight asking for approval for the set design part of that, which would be the art side of it.
I think that the proposal looks.
We have a problem with music program stuff up there.
Is it going to be a?
Yeah, so if they're building sets and stuff and putting it up on the stage.
Yeah, and we'll get creative. Yeah, and actually, segue, we are filling the choral stipend on there. Actually, Slender Will and I met today with Jackie Ward, the music teacher, and she is planning a choral program for this year. So. She's very excited.
Yeah, it's going to be January, February, and March, and then a performance in April.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll have to find that space for the set, but yeah.
Just a quick thought on that, that group that came up and did that performance.
Yeah.
I don't know whether there's an interest like a work, I call it a work-study, but whether these people that are leading the charge. But whether these people that are leading the charge, whether it be music, theater, or set design. Kids at the high school to come up and participate.
Yeah, I, I had a conversation actually with Mr. Brooks, the teacher that's involved with the Ethics Forum. Because our PTA has actually asked me for some help with chess club and Lego robotics. And so he's talking to the group about that already, but that's a great idea to include them in that. Yeah.
So. A motion that we can approve the theater arts club proposal, check that.
I make a motion for the theater arts. This president.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Other than we think it's great? Thank you. Okay, hearing that, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
I thought yes. O'Keefe, yes.
Lawrence, yes.
Hinckley, yes.
Clark, yes.
That passes. Thank you. A little later for the proposal. Please thank the teachers that are involved and.
Absolutely.
Look forward to the exciting update when that gets going.
Thank you.
We are up to our budget discussion. Miss Facy, yay. So, um, as you know, we don't have a budget committee, but we still held a number of meetings. For those that we didn't have a meeting, four members were asked to please submit any questions. So I just took a peek and it looks like there's just one question outstanding. So I think it was planted from Christine to Brian because it was a, we thought it was a power school question, but it's a technology. So that's outstanding, but all other questions have been answered. So you can take a look at those in the budget file. And. On the, there's a proposed changes tab, so there have been some changes since the presentation. So I can just highlight those. Some of them stem from some of the questions that came in, so thank you. Received updates from Primex on our property and liability insurance, so that was adjusted. Our workers comp was adjusted. There was a discussion, I think Stephen, you had put that in there about changing the the replacement furniture, moving that to a outside fund balance. So that is noted on here. There was a do look at entry, a small technology item. The, in your education association agreement, it was established that teachers would provide notice if they were going to be moving a step. So we did receive notification for one teacher, Math and Engineeringist, so that salary adjustment and all the associated benefits are noted on here. The tuition to the middle school, originally the thought was to have the there's students from the Amber School District who are attending the middle school. So the thought was to have that revenue shown in the middle school and have it hit as expensive middle school. But in past practice, what we've done is had the reduction of that tuition from your tuition amount that you paid to the middle school. So you'll see a pretty significant decrease in your tuition to the middle school, close to seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's noted on here. There are some small adjustments to some software. There was a, of the school nutrition manager, as discussed at the last board meeting, was going to receive a salary increase. So that's changed on here as well, along with the associated benefits. Because you're looking to potentially engage in conversations about building addition, or I'm not sure what to call it, but some changes. It's best practice to add a dollar to some of your line items so that in case you decide to look to hire some architectural or engineering companies or do some other work, that you have the ability to transfer funds into those accounts. So I took a look at your four thousand accounts and added a dollar to those. So that's reflected. The treasurer sent a request to increase her, her salary amount by two hundred dollars. So that's reflected along with associated benefits. And then Stephen, you had wanted someone to look at the food service line items, which I did. And took your suggestion to heart to potentially look at increasing the, the rate for the other food service person that is vacant. So I made some adjustments there. It was, it was a low rate. So, so I worked for the Mina and Human Resources to make that change. So those are all reflected. The highlighted in yellow without anything made yet is the performing arts domain leader at five percent of the cost. So that's in there just as a placeholder for discussion purposes. And then the other changes were default changes. And thank you, Stephen, for bringing that up. I noticed in the sheet, there were some leftover formula calculations from last year. So thank you for putting that out. So I caught those. So your default should be in good shape at this point. It's certainly taken a look at it, but there were some items that, that should have been in the default order. Those changes are all on there and ask me questions now or if you want to take a look later and, and ask me questions on email or email call, feel free. Thank you. Yeah. Questions for Amy currently?
So even on that tab there, where is the percentage increase over our proposed budget? Is that the twenty-four thousand over the default?
So on this tab.
So I see the difference, the default eighty-two thousand five ninety as a total for what was just twenty-four two maybe?
Yeah.
It's zero point four one percent, right?
It looks like it. I, I would want to really look at those calculations to make sure it's all carrying forward. But the net change of all of these changes is a negative sixty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-eight.
So for my fellow board members benefit, because we were in the, in the conference and talking about this, my personal desire is to get this as close to default as possible.
Yeah.
Because of the capital commitment this community is going through over the course of the next couple of years. And I don't want to throw us into a default and have no bus transportation that we need to make serious cuts for. I want to make sure that we get the proper raises for food service folks. And, and just trying to make it an easier decision from the tax base to say, hey, schools are really expensive in this town because there's just no tax revenue other than the homes that we live in. And so to say, hey, we have a bare bones budget here that we are still coming back yet again. This is the third year in a row where we've actually had very minimal increases. And I think it's important to share that with the community that a twenty-four thousand dollar increase proposed versus default is reasonable. And I think we can easily justify that in front of our tax base, especially at the delivery session.
I, I think we all agree with you on that. Stephen, I mean, we've talked about that on the board though for the last few years, that, that whatever we can do to help keep it as flat as possible. While making sure that we're adequately accommodating need.
Yeah.
Is really the focus here. So I certainly appreciate that we're continuing with that.
Just to add on that, the twenty-four thousand dollar increase of that eight thousand comes from food service. It's offset by revenues. It's truly only about seventeen thousand dollar difference.
We can highlight that in our slide when we get that, you know, the story and the, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
In the questions, answer page, we're talking about the curriculum piece and being able to use S R funds for that. I know that was a little bit of a challenge because that's something to use for other things, but is there anything in that lineup that we could use? Like Mr. Eckhart said, last month, the seventeen thousand is going towards our exterior structure. Do we use that cost further or is that already embedded in that number? So you remember we were planning to use roughly seventeen thousand of S R funds to go towards that tent?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, and that's done now. So the seventeen thousand, I'm assuming is yet to be allocated. And I'm hoping maybe we can use that for some of the curriculum piece for the advancement and then potentially even reduce the twenty-four thousand or is that already been spoken?
It's not spoken for. But my only wonder, I guess, is whether we're supplanting, which we're not allowed to do typically with federal grants because this was something that was planned for an operating budget expense in, in our long range planning. So I have to, and I'm happy to reach out to the DOE and just connect with them on on supplementing versus planting with S R and whether this specific case would be supplement, would be supplanting where we couldn't do this. So I just haven't had a chance to reach out to them yet, but I definitely can. Any budget questions, Kristen or Jess?
I did not.
Great. And everybody's been okay getting into the file and able to post questions if you have them? I don't, yeah. You can just reach out to me if you need.
So for some strange reason, Google has merged my old surprise email and my SAU email. And now it like brings me back to two thousand twenty-two. So I was doing all the budget entry stuff on my questions. I literally get through it. I'm like, what the heck? This is like going on last year's report. I don't know what it's doing.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Well, so the, the changes, are you are you good with those changes or any, you know, questions on the, you know, for the salary increase for the food service? Not the one that we already gave, but for the new person, is that reasonable? Yeah, I think so.
We addressed that last year during our budget meeting. We were kind of surprised that it wasn't brought forward.
Yeah.
To, to, to talk about. So thank you for.
Yeah. The, the steamer is actually in the budget or in this budget. So. As far as purchasing that this year, I, I don't know that we have the funds to do that.
To me, right?
So Roger's looking into that. He hasn't been able to find that as an option yet, but, but he's checking on it. So, but we did have a meeting with, with the kitchen manager and she said she's managing. She's doing the old school. So certainly not perfect, but she's functioning. Thank you for following up on that. Thank you for following up on that.
What about the unplanned fund balance we always talk about at the end of the year? I think this, do that. I mean, can we?
You definitely, yes. Oh, now.
One special across to raise additional.
Yeah, we'll certainly keep an eye.
Typically only project until end of January. You guys, I'm March.
No, we don't want to have.
Yeah.
It just it just seems like a small number and it seems like it's handcapping. We're talking about making sure that everybody has what they need and it seems like we're handcapping department within the building without the right tools. So that's when I'm a little frustrated with. I got it as a budget and we got to stay in the guardrails, but it just it doesn't seem right. I don't have an answer.
Is Roger going to be adding the kitchen equipment into this like maintenance list of things? Because he's so exceptional at doing that. Like I can't imagine that we would have a problem. Yeah. Yeah, we've already started our lists. So for both technology and facilities. So those are ongoing. And fully updated and shared out with you. Yeah, absolutely.
We always have members of the community donate a bunch of installments.
I'm not giving up.
Thank you, Amy. Awesome job this year. I already told you that in email, but like ninth day versus years past. So kudos to you. It's a very seamless process. Nice job.
Oh, we've got another report. Ms. Casey. Really? Yeah. So we touched on a lot of that, but yeah, so we we don't have our food service director, yes, even. So we have a number of us who are filling in and figuring it out and moving us forward. So Christine and Kelly are doing the power school work. Roger is taking a look at equipment and facilities that we discussed. As I said, we met with your kitchen manager and she's taking care of deposits and has been in touch with me a few times on making corrections to the menu. So we did get our November menus out on time. We're gonna, we're working on our December menus. So those will go out on time as well. We, there were a few corrections that had some information that hadn't been on in the past that we've, we've fixed. So that's good. And we also, there's a lot of reported work that needs to be done. So I've started that process correcting our application and figuring out how to get all of our reports in. So that is work that is happening. I just started, it's actually.
We're done.
Yeah, I saw it. So, so we're moving forward. Obviously, your food service program needs some attention. I, we're budgeting more for next year for the position. We're also looking to increase the wage for this year so that we can hopefully get some applicants. So I have a feeling that maybe is hindering some progress in that area. But I'm working with HR to try to do some recruiting and get somebody filled in here because that's a serious need and attention. So, so that and I know the SEAMR is an issue. I think there may be some issues with dishwasher or is that?
I think it was fixed.
It's fixed? Okay. All right. So that's, that's a plus. But yes, we are trying to ramp up and support your food service program as much as possible and fill in some gaps. So we're progressing. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
For the good work.
Yeah.
We'll work on getting more questions. Any questions for Amy or Kneeta? Just appreciate it. And we are up to our board vote on policies that were suggested to rescind. These are ones that we all discussed at the SAU board meeting. Is there any discussion on suggestions or are there duplicates covered in newer versions of policy? Could be outdated for our district. Questions on those?
Who's going to go through and delete all these on the website?
Abby.
I'm bored of the motions. So you rescind the policies as presented. Fire right here.
I'm sorry.
I just made a motion to rescind the policies as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second for that motion?
Second now.
Any discussion? Very enough. Let's do a roll call votes.
Eckhart, yes.
Lawrence, yes.
Hankley, yes.
Clerk, yes.
Thank you. So that motion passes. We thank Abby in advance for her attention to removing those policies. We are up to our board discussion on the potential board goals. I think we can just.
I do have draft goals. I didn't want to attach it to that card, so I attached other card to the card. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you go into Trello for this meeting, the board goals card, you go into that card, there's a link to another card that then in there, there's an attachment I attached for proposed board goals. Sorry, I didn't mean to be confused, but I didn't want this to get into the agenda because it was just for discussion. But Tom and I met to go over some suggested board goals.
Unless you feel wrong.
So you want me to start?
Either way.
Go ahead.
So what we did is we looked deeply both at reading and math. Given our NWEA scores, we wanted to make sure we were really continuing our focus on that to continue that good work and the progress we've made. But given there were, you know, a few grade levels that didn't quite meet their target growth, we definitely want to make sure we're focusing on reading this year. So with reading, our overall goal was really to promote that literacy-rich environment and encourage an interest in reading because we think that culture and climate is so important for supporting growth in both reading and in math. We saw in math how much just that focus and the culture of encouraging just that positive energy and that interest around that, how much help that was. So that's really our overall goal. In the lower grade levels, we focus on reading, really in building foundational skills for students, both in phonics and phonemic awareness. And the phonemic awareness piece is really that hearing words and really understanding oral language. So about two years ago, we implemented additional phonemic awareness program because we realized foundations, the program we used for phonics, didn't have enough phonemic awareness built into it. So we're really still new with the Haggerty program using kindergarten and first grade. It's a phonemic awareness program. So really keeping focused on that and the importance of that. And there's some challenges with that because part of that oral language, you're supposed to be able to see faces and with masks on, it does make it difficult. Many of our teachers do Haggerty outside so they can remove masks, but it is still a little bit of a challenge. So to keep focus on Haggerty and that oral language is certainly an important piece. And then we provided professional development on opening day of August to our teachers around foundations. We've had foundations for a number of years and we just wanted to kind of remind teachers the importance of that full 30 minutes a day and really following the program. It's a strong research-based program. And we've really focused this year on making sure that we're fully implementing that program P3. It is new in third grade and we're only in our second year of foundations. We've been using it P3 for a number of years. So with some of the changes, we thought that those were really important pieces to focus in on. The other pieces, we do also want to encourage teachers to make sure that students are stretching themselves and making sure that they're reading complex text. And the best way to do that is often in short spurts. If you hand a student, you know, a challenging novel that's 300 pages long and it's hard for them, they're just not going to be able to tackle that text. It'll be at their frustration level, but if it's a page and challenging and that teacher is supporting students in accessing that challenging text, that's a much better strategy. So we have something called Musella. It is basically a warehouse of, I guess, programs or a database of articles on all different topics. And many of them actually align to our Lucy Hopkins units. In second through fourth grade that we use, there are texts that aligns. You just pull up a Lucy Hopkins unit and then it shows you all of the texts that match and pair well with that. And what's great about Musella is you can change the Lexile level. So you can actually, if you have a student that needs an extra challenge, you can make that level harder than grade level text. And it can be the same topic and different kids have different levels of text. So that can be a great way to really supplement what we're doing already with students and encourage them to kind of stretch themselves and challenge themselves. So that was kind of both a reminder about that resource and encouraging teachers to use the resource to really stretch students. And then supporting a school-wide reading challenge, we wanted to pair something with our book fair, which Tom, I believe is just September, right?
Yeah. Yep.
So something where we have a quick figured out what we're going to do, but some sort of school-wide reading challenge tied to the book fair. And then
Actually, Mr. Omen, Ms. Garrett are working on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, but brainstorming ideas at this point, right?
Yeah.
For what they'd like to do to encourage that. And then our outcomes, really, we're looking at NWEA math assessment scores. We certainly could also have a New Hampshire SAT score, but you know, a benchmark that we want to reach. But we focus on NEWA just because that's really focusing on growth, which we thought was important. And those are stretch goals. Certainly, we weren't able to reach that level in all of our grade levels this fall. So they're definitely a stretch, but one that we feel would be exciting to work towards. So questions on that? Is this what the board was looking for? I know we went a little more in depth than what we've done in the past. That outcome is probably more of what you were looking for, but we wanted to share the work that Tom and I were doing to get there.
I think it creates a proper context, right? So goals should be easily achieved because they're not goals. They're just basically things you put on paper. You should be stretching. I like how you've actually quantified both the outcome piece on reading and math. So nice job there.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think they're smart goals. They are. Well, well, Tom has some experience with that and he said, hey, let's, let's dig in and really, you know, pull these out in a way that that flushes them out a little bit more. And so we really did the same thing with math and that same process and really encouraging that deep mathematical thinking, which we've been focused on for a number of years and just continuing that, that culture, that interest and excitement around math. And really some of our steps, you know, the pilot is a focus for us, using the two different sets of math resources this year. But we're learning a lot about math. The materials we're using now, bridges, they, they're hopefully was said lovingly was a Clark Wilkins teacher who said, gosh, I think I'm getting like my master's degree in math by reading these materials. They're, they're deep, you know, it's 11, 12 pages for every lesson. So you're reading through, you know, how you elicit information from students. You're reading through how you're building that deep conceptual understanding. So this is not an easy, let's turn to this page in the math book and hit the ground running. Teachers are spending an hour or two every night, you know, just reading through, understanding. It's professional development every day for our teachers with those math resources. So it's a huge focus for us. And again, with any, it's a little scary because with any change, sometimes we'll get a little implementation dip. So my goal is for us to be consistent with our, the progress that we've made and the growth that we've made over the years. And also, you know, really focusing on supporting teachers throughout the year because it is a heavy left with the pilot. And then really continuing just that, that school-wide math initiative, the houses, the STEM challenges. And then Charlene, as she's done many years, is interested in hosting the math club card as well again.
Any questions?
I think so, great.
Yeah, I think adopting that, that's written.
Yeah, I think so too. That's what we were looking for. So thank you for the work on that.
Yeah.
Tom did a lot on that too. Just for Kristen, did you have any, any input? I don't want to leave you out of the conversation.
No, I think it sounds really great. Obviously, a lot of work went into it.
Yeah, I want to echo that. That's a tremendous amount of work. It sounds great.
Since we have a school-based PD day next Friday, we'd like to share and be able to roll this out with teachers on that day. So this is pretty timely.
I feel good to go with that.
There's an additional goal that is new that I want to talk about, but yeah, as great, I really like what's proposed.
Right. What did you want to add?
Facility school and really trying to, but I know we talked about it last month. I'd really like to create a goal about understanding that the right location for the right type of instruction in this building. As I mentioned last month, it's very cramped right now. You know, you've got obviously him in a space that that may not be appropriate. We've got a teacher lounge and an old reading room. We've got a music program on the stage. Like we really need to sort of figure out to do an analysis, maybe partnering with Tom and Roger to figure out, you know what? We need to move some people around to get music back into a room off the stage. And how we do that, obviously, you know, I rely on your expertise to sort of under judge that. But as a board, I think we need to really try to encourage this as we possibly can.
Good. I'm happy to add it, but I is that, is it just, is the goal?
The goal is to have the board properly understand space needs and then reallocating those resources as appropriate and applicable. So we have the proper instruction occurring in the right space.
Yeah, the classroom has some grounds. I've had so many cards that that was the initial card.
You know, this was an under, we're interrupted by COVID and it's been ongoing, but
we've had engagement with state leaders engaging with the public on a quarterly basis. COVID gaps, like basically addressing the social and emotional supports. That was another goal that we had identified.
It's going to be a big, once we remove the mask, we have the anxiety, it's going to be pressed for some kids and making sure that our counseling staff is going to be on hand to support those.
I can sort of go back through these cards and make sure that we've got it all captured in a document for next month. But I'm comfortable with Christine and Tom taking the goals that we discussed tonight that they laid out to the staff for the PD. That's okay with everyone else.
I think we're pretty clear. Like I don't want to like be in February talking about board goals here. So like, I think we're kind of done with the addition to the facilities conversation. I'm comfortable. Do we approve it? Do we adopt it? Do you want to do that tonight?
I'd be happy to, to, or entertain a motion to adopt it.
I need to make a motion to adopt our
Second that.
Any discussion? Very enough. Let's take a roll call vote.
Make sure they're qualified with the addition of the building facilities.
It's already written on there.
Okay, yes.
Eckhart, yes.
Lawrence, yes.
Hankley, yes.
Clerk, yes.
Thank you. We are public input two, two. Hello, welcome.
Well, how about that? What party one please? No, I offered my commentary on the growth mindset piece. I think that's great. I have a kindergarten here and we just moved from Texas here last December and incredibly grateful to be here, close to family. And thank you all for the work you do serving the kids. It's amazing. And my dad was a public educator for 30 years and I know it's sometimes a thankless job. And so the amount of time and emotion you form to our kids is real special. But no, frankly, this is the first school board meeting I've ever been to. So how about that? The first, the only one and the first, right? And so, but I do have one question. Do you plan on taking up the subject of vaccinations for kids at any point in the, in this meeting process? Not to that night necessarily, but a next one?
So I'll defer to our superintendent.
Yeah, so we're not planning as a school system to do anything around vaccinations. We're going to really leave that to parents. That's been our plan all along. It's such a contentious issue and there's, there's heated opinions on both sides, obviously, we'll say. And so as a school, we're factoring in vaccination availability for five to 11-year-olds in our protocols. And so once they become available, as they are now, but when they're able to be, appointments are available. There's a three-week gap between vaccination, a 14-day lag after the second shot. Once that's available for our students, we will factor that into our COVID protocols.
I have to thank you with gratitude for allowing parents to make that decision.
Thank you. One thing that I didn't ask you in the beginning was just to identify yourself for the record.
Sure. John Prescott.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it. President Mark.
Thank you. And thanks very much for joining us. Hope this won't be the last time we see you.
I'll be here again. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we had a request for a non-public session. We have need for a non-public. So can I just have a motion to enter non-public with the appropriate bias?
With personal, see, see, so make a motion to move into non-public. See, personal, personal reputation.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second then.
Roll call vote.
Okay, yes.
Eckhart, yes.
Lawrence, yes.
Hankley, yes.
Clerk, yes.
Thank you. So we will enter non-public at 7:28.